Call the meeting to order, six thirty P M. Charlton Board of Selectmen's meeting, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If we could all stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I don't expect this to be a very long meeting. We do have a, um, we do have a few things. We, one, 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 one announcement is, is Harry Keenan?
Cannon.
Keenan. Keenan. Harry is our Shepherd Hill student person of the, uh, yeah.
Representative.
Select person of the year, so. Harry, we want to congratulate you to the board and, and, and help you, and yeah, allow you to realize that you're not a voting member, but you're, but, but you are, but you do have a little bit of input on, you can nudge these guys.
Much appreciated. Thank you for appointing me.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to ask with the board's approval, Harry, if you'd want to let the folks at home just kind of tell us a little bit more about yourself, what you're interested in, et cetera?
Sure. So I, my favorite, my favorite subject in school is usually history, though that it always depends on, it always depends on the teacher, if the teacher, if the teacher makes the subject of so, it doesn't always work out that way, but the last two years, that's been, that's been pretty solid. I, let's see, I, I am a member of the National Honor Society, I'm in the, I'm in the Drama Club, we're doing a, we're doing a show in January. I've, let's see.
And you're a senior this year?
Junior.
Oh, you're a junior, look at you.
Ideally, I'm here through the, I mean, I'm here through two thousand and twenty-four, so you're not, you're not getting rid of me anytime soon.
Any voluntary work?
Sometimes, yes, for the, yeah, for the NHS or for other stuff. It's fun, I like, I like doing stuff like, sometimes I'll like, when tests are coming up for our classes, I'll make like these, some varying in size, these review things that help people, help people study for stuff, and they, they like that, like, and it helps me too, because that's, I found that's the best way to help me study, because if you can explain it to somebody else, you have to have a pretty fundamental understanding of it yourself, so that, and I was, let's see.
Can you explain banking to Bill?
No, I was, I was almost thinking, if, if you start making emojis about selectmen at the Charlton Selectmen, be kind.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Would.
Welcome to the show.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Very good.
Very excited.
Okay, and now we're on to consent.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November fifteenth, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, as I. Community relations announcements and open forum.
The town hall will be closed on Monday, December twenty-sixth, in observance of Christmas, and Monday, January second, two thousand and twenty-three, in observance of New Year's Day. Two thousand and twenty-three dog licenses now available at the town, town clerk's office. By email or online, you can go to the town website at www.towncharlton.net. December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, Santa right through town. Time and schedule we put on the fire department's social media accounts when available. And there's an retirement party will be held for Terry Goh, who retired as the executive assistant for the fire department on January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The party is at six P M. at Auburn Alks at seven fifty-four Savage Street in Auburn, Mass. Tickets can be purchased for twenty-five dollars by contacting Fire Chief at Nav at five oh eight two four eight two two eight zero or five oh eight three two zero nine nine six eight. I just, I just want to add to it, we have a Chippens this Wednesday at two thirty, we're going to unload some food that we will later serve on Saturday between nine and twelve, so if anybody has any interest of helping out, we could use a couple pair of hands then.
Tomorrow, Wednesday?
Tomorrow, Wednesday, at the Chippens, at two thirty. Happy holidays to us all.
Mr. Chairman, just one more quick thing.
Yes.
Just a shout out and a thank you to Bud Harris, the Fire Department, and everyone who's involved with the tree letting ceremony. I think we had more people in the parade this year than we have ever before, and it was really great turnout for everybody, so again, thanks for everybody who's got.
Absolutely. I would think there were probably twice as many flows.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah, it was, it was cold, it was nice.
I had a hat on. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one other note, forgive me if I've already asked for this, but I'm getting old and I can remember things. If I haven't already asked, can we have a certificate made for Terry, signed by the board for her retirement? Her input and everything she's done and her participation in so many facets of the community and the town has been just amazing, and I think it'd be nice to acknowledge and recognize that.
So now we're on to, is no one out there for open forum or any other questions pertaining to, okay, appointments and resignations?
None for tonight.
None for tonight. So then we're moving on to new business, which is the license renewals. I looked through this, we signed, I think, I'm sure we've all signed all the licenses, I haven't seen anything. I'm willing to accept a motion that we.
Some move.
That, that, that we take the entire one hundred and thirteen lists is all in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I'm abstaining from the quarter cake post because of a family interest.
Very good. Do we know? Economic, Economic Development Commission reorganization.
So since reinstituting the Economic Development Commission back in two thousand and twenty, the commission has made some great strides in providing new resources and making connections with the business community. So after two years, the commission has evaluated its current membership and requesting that the Board of Selectmen consider amendments to its original, or its organizational structure to bring more voices from the business community to the table. When the commission was first organized, it required a majority of voting members to be from various elected and appointed boards. The commission has recommended amending this to drop the joint membership requirement with the appointed boards and to add additional seats for residents interested in the committee schools and business owners. The revised membership, as requested, would be one Board of Selectmen member or designated, one resident business owner, one non-resident business owner, one business owner or, or resident, and three residents to represent the community at large. Membership on any elected or appointed board will not preclude any member from holding a business owner or community at large seat. What are the wishes of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with this, I mean, it sounds like it came directly from the E D C, and that is, and so they were the catalyst for it, so.
There, there, yeah, yes, there was a well-thought discussion with the E D C, and I agree.
So, that being said, I'll make a motion to approve the changes and then advertise accordingly.
Yes, yeah.
My second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so now we have two open seats on the Economic Development Commission, which.
We'll put some advertising out.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Hopefully we just did a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, very briefly, I know we have someone in the audience, and I don't know if you were here for community forum or something else.
Yes, I'm here for open forum.
Oh, you were here for open forum? Oh, I'm sorry, well.
No, 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 he showed up after, so I just figured if you were here.
Yes, alright.
Now, if you're, so, if it pleases the board and the chair, say we just go back to open forum.
I, I would be fine with that.
Come on up, can you sit, take a seat at the table?
Sure.
Just a name, address, et cetera.
Sure, no problem. Matt Power, I am the owner of the Vinyl Underground Sign Shop here in Charlton, Mass.
Cool.
Nice to meet you.
Hey, nice to meet everyone. I just figured I'd show up just to see what goes on.
Oh, I thought that, that you were looking for, for our help with something, I'm sorry, that's my bad.
No, no, we're just kind of one of those things where I just figured I'd check it out, you know, see what goes on.
Oh, go, yeah, come and hang out.
As a, you know, as a, you know, a new member of the town and stuff like that, I figured I'd check out, see what goes on.
Well, it was worth a, it was nothing else, it was worth a cheap plug for your business, so.
There you go.
No, but he, Marty also received the ARPA funds.
Yes, I did receive funds from the grant. Oh, cool. For, for the business, yep, and I also do work for the town, stuff like that, so.
And helped us a lot of participation in Old Home Day.
Yes, I did work for Old Home Day, yep, I do a lot of work for, obviously, a lot of towns in business, assuming a lot of businesses in town and stuff like that, so, you know, I'm very active, I guess I would say, in the town, so I try to do as much as I possibly can for Town Charlton.
Well, thanks for everything, and by the way, if you have questions, just address it to the chair.
We really like when people show up.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, it's so rare.
No, no, before you leave, are you a resident in Charlton?
Yes.
You are a resident.
Actually, I talked with you during.
So the, the, the Economic Development Commission for a business owner resident.
Yes, that is me.
There you go.
You would, you would check that box, I would.
Sure.
Email Andrew or myself or anyone on the board.
You'd realize you stop anyone from ever coming to a meeting.
Are they still, are they still on?
It's a sales, yeah, yeah.
Steve, are they still meeting on Zoom? You guys meeting on Zoom?
Yes, we're still doing our meetings.
So still Zoom meetings, Matt?
It's fine.
No, you'd be great for it, no, you really would be.
No, yeah, economic development, and you make.
Sure.
Banners and.
I make everything.
Advertising, no, that's got nothing to do with economic development, no.
No.
Advertising, no, it doesn't, no, well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
If you have any questions, just go to the chair.
No, I want to know something. Did the ARPA funds help you, what you received from the town?
Yes.
Yeah, you apply them?
Yes.
And use them wisely?
Yeah, I was able to buy a piece of equipment that I needed, so it helped very much, much appreciated.
Okay, that's good, good to know.
So now we can, so now we can almost say where economic development is almost looking for only a business owner, non-resident.
Yes, yes, I can occupy that other seat.
I, I thank you too much.
It's possible. Thanks, thanks.
A R P A funds.
So at the wishes of the board from the last meeting, I tweaked the numbers for a proposed budget on the ARPA money. I do apologize for the typo in the memo, but it's actually the remaining amount after what is proposed to be two hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine oh eight. That would essentially allocate one point five million dollars toward the, toward the school district for the safety improvements in the roof. To get to that number, I eliminated one of the proposed inspectional vehicles that was on the, that was on the list and reduced the amount that was going toward the sewer headworks project from five hundred thousand to three hundred thousand.
So I noticed there was no apology for the two-point sponsorizing.
Yeah, yeah, you can only work with what you're given with.
So, so through the chair, so for those folks at home, we had the discussion last time around how we wanted to use this, and knowing that we have an obligation to pay, both moral and quite frankly, financial obligation, to pay for what was voted on recently, we're going to put one point five million toward, of the ARPA funds, towards the roof and the safety upgrades, which will ultimately help minimize, if not eliminate, any type of tax increases, with the assumption is that the rest we'll try to keep under the levy limit, if we can.
Yep.
So this is a nice way of using those funds to help offset any type of potential taxes as well as others, so, that being said, I commend the T A. on this, and I'd make a motion to approve as per subject.
Second.
Yep, so, for discussion, yes, yes, no, I agree, Andrew did a great job in putting all this together, and I think it's, it's one of those, the A R P A money is, is, you have to dedicate it or you're going to lose it, and you got two years to do it.
Just, just one, just one point for the, for the board, so, on the, just as far as the annual impact for, for this money, so if we decided to not put any of that money toward the, toward the, the project itself, essentially, the projected year one borrowing costs of the town would have been about six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. With the one point five million dollars added, that brings that borrowing cost for year one down to three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
That's a significant number.
So that's, that's pretty much.
And that's a fifteen-year note.
Right, of a, on a fifteen-year note.
Which we can talk more about.
Right, so, right, and that, I mean, that's all based off a fifteen-year, I mean, it's really the schools that are more likely going to draw, more going to drive the term of that based off of, you know, their budget, but that's just kind of a general pro forma as to what the annual cost impact would be by using the ARPA money for this purpose.
That's awesome. Well done.
Very well done.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
No, so we have a second, and, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not opposed. So the special act raising the retirement age to seventy for, for special police officers, recommended changes.
So at the May sixteenth annual town meeting, the town meeting did vote to raise the maximum retirement age of special police officers in the town of Charlton to seventy years old. We sent that information to our senators and representatives, asking for their support to get this through the process. The Senate reviewed the bill that was filed to get this through and received feedback specifically from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and PARAC, basically that, under the training requirements, section ninety-six B. of chapter forty-one, which require both, require both prior police reform legislation, both agencies were recommending omitting the exemption language in the bill for, as outlined in your memo. So I recommend that the board approve the changes as proposed by the Senate, so that way that can be pushed through.
So, Mr. Chairman, so for those at home, this was voted on at town meeting, the intent stays the same, we're literally just cleaning up the language via some legislative concerns that they had. It's really just a matter of compliance with some training, but from other purposes, nothing changes. That being said, Andrew, should I read the term motion, please?
Just as a recommended motion.
Alright, so move to amend the bill in section four by striking up the second sentence and inserting in place the following sentence. Such special police officers shall comply with all requirements of chapter sixty of the general laws improving the type of one, maintain certification and good standing with the Massachusetts Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission, and two, complying with the, with all annual in-service and other training requirements mandated by the Municipal Age Training Committee.
Second.
Motion and second, do, any discussion?
No.
No, that sounds pretty well thought through. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes, as I. Enamnis.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming we're skipping over the T A. contract.
Unless we're going into executive session for that.
We'll, we'll handle that after the executive session.
Oh, alright. So Board of Selectmen Committee reports, if there are any? Nope, moving on. Board of Selectmen policy review, personnel policies?
You read all this, I swear to God.
No, I read it, no, I, I, I did, yeah.
Yeah, so, very quick, so at the annual town meeting in two thousand and nineteen, the town of Charlton had acted, voted to repeal and replace the personnel policies and procedures by law, and under that section basically said that until the town adopts a comprehensive set of personnel policies that the prior remain in effect, which is essentially what we've been doing for the last few years. So we've been working on, you know, a firm set of personnel policies and procedures, really Lynn has been the spearhead of that, working with our Labor Council to get that done. Really want to thank her and, you know, Clifford and Kenny for all their work doing this, but attached, you'll have a, is a copy of the proposed policies for your consideration. If you have any questions, Lynn is here, we also have a representative from Clifford and Kenny on Zoom if you're on.
Chairman, I thought it was very well written, and, you know, I like saying Lynn and the team sort of put this together, it's really very, it, it is very detailed and it's articulated very well, I don't think there's a lot of gray in this, which is usually what we like to see, so, anyway, very well done.
I agree.
So unless there's questions for anybody, I'll make a motion to approve as per.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yeah, unanimous as well.
Excellent.
Do you feel like you showed up, do you want to come up and talk for a little while? Because we feel like you showed up.
Is there anything? We, we, we should could have put her on the start, no, no, yeah, I know.
It's much improved, really good.
Well written.
And I used it to fall asleep a couple nights.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it was, it wasn't all for one reading, that's for sure, but. Then we are on to Board of Selectmen T O. goals, town administrators' goals and objectives.
I think we just go to select persons report.
What's that?
We just go to the select persons report. We have anything on goals, objectives right now?
Two representatives.
Okay. All right, so, this is just general things that are going on at Shepherd Hill around this period, so in terms of general scheduling, next week will be the last school week before the holiday break, and that last Friday, the twenty-third, will be a half-day. Holiday break will last through January second, school will resume on January third, and that is a Tuesday. Midterms take place between Friday, January the thirteenth, yes, you've heard that correctly, and Thursday, January nineteenth, the semester will end after that week, and we will move into the second half of the year. The National Honor Society is running a toy drive throughout the remainder of the month, all donations of either unopened toys or cash can be brought to the main office or room two hundred and one at Shepherd Hill. Additionally, N H S volunteer hours will be due at their next monthly meeting on January ninth with no exceptions. The Shepherd Hill Show Choir ran their annual holiday spectacular over the weekend, which went off without a hitch, spectacular is definitely an understatement, we wish them the best of luck as they continue into their competition season next year. The Shepherd Hill Drama Club will be performing on the radio, a series of shorter spooky radio plays on Friday, January sixth, and Saturday, January seventh. Plays performed include Edgar Allan Poe's The Tell-Tale Heart and Lizzie Borden took an axe by Robert Locke. New winter accessories for children in foster care are being collected in room one hundred and four at Shepherd Hill through the end of the week, with all donations going directly toward the Casa Project charity. And the enrollment deadline for the April twenty-four Global Awareness Trip to Switzerland and Italy is this Friday, December sixteenth, which is significantly earlier than it has been in the past, so keep that on your radar. An informational meeting is being held at seven P M. at Shepherd Hill on December thirteenth, so, right now, I suppose. Informational request forms are also available in the main office, and that will be all I have for you today.
Wow, very well, Harry, that's a nice opening. I'm not surprised you, you've gone through the same school system that Bill Barowski went through.
Harry, much higher.
As far, yeah, you go, you go through four pages in a, in a very.
Bill also was in drumming class.
Harry, nice job. Well done.
Sure.
Town administrators' report.
All right, so we're already timed to start talking about the F Y twenty-four budget. Currently, departments are in the process of submitting their budget requests for F Y twenty-four, which are due back by December thirtieth. I just want to invite the board, or remind the board that you will be invited to the Finance Committee meeting on Wednesday, January eighteenth, to discuss our budgetary priorities headed into the next year. This year, we're doing something new, we're going to be coordinating a budgetary round table at ten o'clock in the morning on Tuesday, the seventeenth, basically for all departments to come in here, hear about the, our initial revenue projections, and kind of give a soft presentation on their own budgets before, before really going into the Finance Committee process and get some light feedback before going through. I do want to invite the members of the board, if you're available at that time, I know it's kind of a tough time.
When, when is that?
Ten A M. on Tuesday, January seventeenth.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Through you, Andrew, somewhat related, and we were talking a little before, so our friends on the school committee met with our counterparts in Dudley last night to talk around their fiscal year twenty-four budget. I'd recommend, before rumors festering to fact, that we invite them here as well, because my understanding is that Dudley, for a variety of different reasons, inclusive of their municipal needs, may be proposing an override on their side. As of today, I don't believe we're even considering that, so I want to nip that in the bud, because you're going to hear about it, but I think it'd be healthy for them to come in to kind of just talk through briefly what they're going to be asking for next year, and quite honestly, what impact that may have on our operational budget, that inclusive of potential borrowing under the levy limit to make that happen, so, I know, you know, that we meet with them a little bit later, so often, but I think the, the earlier we can get in front of this, so people aren't questioning what's going on, I think the better option.
Good idea.
And the only other thing is, I hate to mention it, but at some point, we're going to have to talk, and maybe it's at this finance meeting, around, when we think around our new growth coming in, what are the board's priorities on where it should be? Operating budgets, capital budgets, et cetera? Because my fear is that there are a lot of people who are, who see the numbers flashing out there, saying, well, we're going to get all this new growth, and we are, and it's going to be great, however, what are we going to do with it? You know, are we going to put it towards schools, are we going to build things, et cetera? And before people start to make claim on it, I think we need to have a, have a direction to give to Andrew with the Finance Committee to say, here's where we'd like to do it. So, I, I think that conversation either has to occur in January or sooner than later, so we can start our longer-term planning, but with that, I'll get off my soapbox.
You know, Andrew really has worked well on the long-term capital plan too, so that's it'll be such a, you know, a good tool for people to look at.
That, that was a little bit of a long conversation, but I'm not quite sure we need representatives from Dudley, Charlton to this, to the town meeting on eleven, on January seventeenth. I don't, I don't, I'm not quite sure why they would need to be.
That's all you man.
No, that's, no, 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 I'd like them to come here and, and meet with us.
Turn to us.
At some point.
Sooner than later, though, because when Andrew's making up his budget, again, hypothetically, if they need a couple million dollars from us for May, for our fiscal year twenty-four, we got to figure out where it's going to come from.
Yeah, so January meeting.
And, and, but that's assuming that's the case.
Yeah, in between all those.
No, no, yeah, but we, but we, but we were talking about the Tuesday eleventh, one seventeen, ten A M.
Right.
No, no, they'll be separate.
Right, that won't be a formal Board of Selectmen meeting, but I think as far as Bill's concerned, it's.
But it, but it's all related. As, as we plan out our finances, because we're right in the middle of budget season, if, I, I think we need to get a good handle on what the school's going to be asking for, because if they are asking for a significant, or let's just say, an increase of what they currently have, we have to find a way to budget for that this year, and, you know, town meeting's only, yeah, I mean, it's funny to say, but it's only five and a half months away.
No, it's crazy.
So, if, in fact, it holds true, and again, I'm not sure what the final proposal's going to be fiscal year twenty-four, but if it is significant, and let's be honest, we had, we had a lot of conversations last year that went down to the wire around, we weren't sure what was going to happen, mostly because of our counterparts in Dudley, but even internally, we had discussions around what tier are we going to support? Thankfully, we were able to support the highest tier. I don't know if that's going to be the case this year, I hope it is, but I suppose all I'm saying is that I'd rather be proactive with the schools this year than reactive, so to move them up into our planning process a little bit earlier, that, that's all I'm recommending, as part of this larger budget conversation.
So to oversimplify, you go on a trip, you're planning a route in advance, you don't have a surprise detour. Must you?
Yeah.
I could have done that in five seconds, so yeah.
No, Andrew, January will be appropriate, while all of this is happening, so it's going to be fresh and everything else, I think.
I'll work with their schedule, so they'll all be together. All right, moving on, so Route Twenty Reconstruction Project, we did meet with the, with Mass D O. T. to review the project's schedule, very tentative at this time, from Richardson Corridor to Route Twelve. They're anticipating that in February, they'll begin the utility work associated with that project, but that may have changed after a utility meeting that they had recently, but in total, they're looking at a four-year timeline of completion, probably going to have a dedicated website of this through Mass D O. T., but we'll try to have that linked directly to our site for easy access to our residents who are interested in the progress. Public Safety Radio Project, we did just receive bids on December seventh, we're currently in the process of reviewing those between both chiefs, L B. Communications and I. Once we select the most advantageous proposal and review cost estimates, we'll bring that back to the board for action. And the police station roof, we did officially receive the monies from the grant and, or through the state, and we are receiving the materials on-site tomorrow, so that way the project should be done by the end of the weekend.
That's very cool. Well done.
All right. Very good. Are, are there business unknown at time of?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. There was one more.
We have a C. O. I.
Yeah, uh, this came in, uh, yesterday, so I added two other items unknown at time posting. Um, so, uh, Mark Oliver, he, uh, our D. P. W. foreman, has filed a conflict of interest disclosure with the town in accordance with, uh, M. G. L. two sixty-eight A, section nineteen disclosing that one of his, of the town's identified private snow and ice removal contractors employs his son for the purpose of snow plowing. As foreman Mark oversees the aspects of snow and ice operations and assigns work responsibilities to hired contractors, in review of the disclosure, I advise the board to make the determination that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of service which the municipality may expect from him in his capacity as D. P. W. foreman.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the financial interest is outlined in Mr. Oliver's conflict of interest disclosure is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from his capacity as D. P. W. foreman.
I would second that and offer a thanks to the family member, because we all know how hard it is to get anybody to step up and, and file as a contractor nowadays.
Correct, correct. Um, yeah, first and a second?
First and a second.
David, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, absolutely. And thank you, thank you, Mark Oliver.
Yeah, I would say, like, win in doubt, just win out of it.
Yeah, that's it. No, no, it makes it, yeah, it makes it a whole lot easier later, yep. And now we are. Next meeting announcement? Are we, are we that?
The next meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, does anyone have any other business? I know I don't, but.
The next meeting is, assuming that you don't want me on the twenty-seventh, would be January tenth.
January.
Ten.
Ten.
So, so can we have them on that meeting?
I will reach out to them, check their.
Because they'll apply before the other seventeen and the eighteen.
Yes.
Oh, is that the school committee?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, they, they. And again, it all may be a bunch of do about nothing, but at the same time.
Oh, oh, that's good.
Your next reg, regular meeting date would be the twenty, or be the two days after Christmas, but I assume that with not much going on, we can probably delay that one unless there's urgent action.
Get out your smoking.
I think I'm good. Harry, great to meet you.
Thank you.
I, I think before we, um, are, are we going into executive session? We are.
Yeah, talk, Andrew.
In front of his back.
In front of his, in front of his back. That seems more fun.
Well, well done. And we're looking forward to you for the, at least the next.
Someone want to read the, um.
I've enjoyed this immensely. Thank, thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we go into executive session under M. D. L. chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A, number two, to conduct strategy sessions and preparation negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator contract. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, enter reconvening to open session if needed and to adjourn. We may need it just a morning. Second.
For discussion. Harry did, would you pay any attention to that? Because you're doing a good job.
It's not getting really fast, basically.
All in favor?
There's going to be an executive session.
A roll call.
Uh, aye.
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 Barbara, aye. Kathy, aye. Chair, aye. Bill, aye. David, aye. Harry?
We, we might come back over for a vote. Harry, thanks for coming.
Excellent, Harry.
Thanks for showing up. Sorry, I, I didn't.